Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call Tuesday, April 11, 2023 Committee of the Hold to Order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie. Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman DeSensio. Alderman McMeniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Madam Chair, a quorum is present.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have a speaker. Ms. April would like to be moved to the front of the agenda, if that's okay?
Yes.
Second. Good evening. April Poole, 3061 Buena Vista Drive, a proud North Ender and Twin Lakes. I am a member of the Coalition of Rainbow Alliances. I'm the treasurer of the... And I come before you to thank each of you and your support for the Coalition of Rainbow Alliances and our recent fundraiser. Some of you were there, some of you donated money, some of you bought advertising, some of you sponsored, and we just wanted to say thank you. We had a record number of attendants, record number of sponsors, advertisers, and our theme is, was "Together Building Community." Those who attended were given wooden blocks to recognize building community, and it was all put together in a nice arrangement so that you can see how we all touch each other and how we have to build community and that all of us are stronger with each other. So again, the Coalition of Rainbow Alliances, thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with council members on various projects within your wards. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was supposed to say, y'all got these nice little booklets and you can see the number of advertisers and sponsors that we had and the good time that we had. And thank you to the mayor as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, April.
I would like to... A motion for approval for March 28, 2023 Committee Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Madam Treasurer, would you please present the treasurer's report?
Thank you, Chair Purchase. The corporate fund in the month of March had a beginning balance of $70,432,274. We took in total receipts of $11,292,740. We had total disbursements in the month of March of $14,337,810, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance of $67,387,204. Chair Purchase, of that ending corporate fund balance, your ARPA fund ending balance included in that is $21,599,47. This concludes my report, Chair Purchase.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as submitted.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any questions regarding the OBM contract report? None? Do we need a motion? Nope, okay. Are there any presentations? Nope? Okay.
So we have... Yeah, we have one.
Yeah.
Are they gonna go now?
Are you guys gonna come up?
Who is it?
I'll wait till we get to their turn.
Okay, that's fine. Next, we have ordinances table or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances?
Yes, thank you. 2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001, 2023-055, 2023-086, 2023-128.
Is there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances for committee consideration? Moving right along.
CWLP, 2023-131, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of cargo transit van from Landmark Ford Incorporated from a state contract in the amount not to exceed $50,539 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-132, an ordinance authorizing payment of membership dues to the American Public Power Association in the amount of $58,063.49 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-133, an ordinance authorizing and approving a proposal from Sentinel Technologies Incorporated to upgrade the VOIP phone system in an amount not to exceed $116,108.4 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-134, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of lease agreements for Site 95, 4121 Greenberry Road, and Edward McMasters, and for the Site 101, a garage north of 9047 Wall Road with Edward Gregory for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-135, an ordinance approving 10 separate recreational leases with various tenants for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-136, an ordinance approving 30 separate farm leases with various tenants for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-137, an ordinance authorizing and approves a customer work agreement with the State of Illinois Capital Development Board for the installation of water mains, hydrants, and service connections to provide water service to the existing buildings being modified at 1220 North Ninth Street due to the railroad consolidation project in an amount not to exceed $395,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-138, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with telecommunications services with the Board of Trustees of Illinois State University's ISU for Ethernet connections from 200 North Grand Avenue West to 120 West Jefferson, Suite B for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
I couldn't make that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2023-139, an ordinance authorizing purchase of used aerial truck from Schmitty's Machinery Company or comparable vendor for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-140, an ordinance accepting the lowest responsible bid and authorizing execution of contract number PW23-02-100 with PH Broughton &amp; Sons Incorporated to furnish construction of the Brunson Lane and MacArthur Boulevard road diets in an amount not to exceed $790,873 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-141, a resolution notifying the State of Illinois Department of Transportation that motor fuel tax funds in the amount of $490,000 may be used for the construction and construction engineering services of A Street Bridge over Spring Creek, MFT Section Number 15-00483-00-BR for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, I will be...
Is there amendment to this?
No, it's 143.
Okay.
Mr. Clerk, I will be a present. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-142, an ordinance authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois Department of Transportation for the reconstruction of A Street Bridge over Spring Creek, MFT Section 15-00483-00-BR, SN 084-32222 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second. Mr. Clerk, I'm a present. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-143, an ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement with Cummings Engineering Corporation for construction of engineering services for the A Street Bridge over Spring Creek, MFT Section Number 15-00483-00-BR, SN 084-32222 in amount not to exceed $258,228 for the Office of Public Works.
Madam Clerk, I'd like to make a motion to adopt amendment number one as proposed.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Motion for consent.
As adopted, as amended, excuse me.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-144, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Reese in Blenheim for the purchase of Rideaway located at 1009 North Tenth Street in an amount of $55,000 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $56,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6B for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-145, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Ruth Jorgensen, aka Ruth Jorgensen, for the purchase of Rideaway located at 1309 East North Grand Avenue in an amount of $38,300 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $39,800 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-146, an ordinance authorizing a contract with JML Company of Springfield Incorporated for the purchase of Rideaway located at 1408 East North Grand Avenue in an amount of $19,000 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $20,500 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project, Usable Segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-147, a resolution requesting temporary closure of a portion of Illinois State Route Sixth Street, Sixth Street from St. Joseph's to Adelie Stevenson Drive for the Church of the Little Flower Men's Club, Street Festival on May 26, 2023 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2023-148, an ordinance authorizing a decrease in the number of Class D liquor licenses by one due to change in business entity by Lutheran Retirement Center Association doing business as Concordia Village located at 4101 West Isles Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-149, an ordinance to increase number of Class D liquor licenses by Lutheran Senior Services doing business as Concordia Village located at 4101 West Isles Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-150, an ordinance to increase the number of Class N liquor licenses by Lutheran Senior Services doing business as Concordia Village located at 4101 West Isles Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-151, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D liquor licenses by Ugly Restaurant and Bar LLC doing business as Ugly Bar &amp; Restaurant located at 2312 Wabash Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
Is that bar ugly? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-152, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services contract with Maricon LLC to complete actuarial reports for the city's health benefit costs for fiscal year 2024 and attestation for Part D subsidy for a total amount not to exceed $5,500 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-153, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Andrews Engineering Incorporated to provide oversight of the construction, excavation, and membrane barrier system installation for Fire Station Number Six located at 1034 East Ash Street in an amount not to exceed $90,000 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-154, an ordinance authorizing extension through February 29, 2024 of contract RFP LL20-23 with Baker &amp; Taylor Incorporated to provide library materials and approving payment for an amount not to exceed $300,000 for Lincoln Library.
Move consent.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
2023-155, an ordinance accepting amended development agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois and Legacy Park Sports LLC for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
For debate.
Move for debate.
Second. All those in favor?
Well, we're gonna...
Oh, any discussion?
I think we've got some.
I got that presentation.
Okay.
You're on quite a roll, sorry for slowing you down.
Right.
But we do appreciate you making time for us this evening. My name's Ryan McCready, I'm president of the Springfield Stadium Growth Alliance, and I'm here tonight with Dirk McCormick, he is with the development team of the Shields Sports Park, and Todd Yancy, who is from Sports Facilities Companies, that's the company that the city hired to do the initial market study for the sports complex, and then the current developer also secured their services to do an additional study on, to bring us where we are today. What is before you for consideration tonight and then hopefully next Tuesday is an amendment to the development agreement that you've already adopted for the sports complex. The reason the amendments are necessary, there's a few of those. And late this afternoon, and not early enough for you to probably read and absorb it, I did email all of you a summary document that summarizes the changes. I believe the council coordinator also has some of that information that he'll be giving to you in writing, including a number of pictures and renderings of what the facility will look like when it's completed. The amended development agreement provides specific plans now that they have them for the size and scope and design of the sports complex. Also, the financial institution that's looking to provide financing for the project had some wording adjustments that they wanted to see in the development agreement to set them up for financing the project and moving towards construction. Also, the development team, due to inflationary cost increases and increases in interest rates, had to invest a lot of time in value engineering to try to bring the sports complex to creation given the current economic environment that exists today. In the process of doing that, in the process of talking to their key stakeholders, the Sports Facilities Company will be the operator, but also stakeholders who have signed agreements to utilize the facility, they found out that it was actually going to be cheaper for them to do all the construction in one phase as opposed to doing it in two phases. They also remember the discussion in front of this body where several members had suggested that they would like to see the indoor and the outdoor facility completed at the same time. So the good news is, is we are actually gone through an inflationary environment, significant increases in interest rates, but come out with a product that we believe is actually better for the community than what was first conceptualized. One of the reasons it's better is that this will include the creation of a 150,000 square foot sports dome that will be able to host tournaments, and that way the facility can host tournaments 12 months out of the year. That dome will hold six basketball courts or 12 volleyball courts, I believe 18 pickleball courts, which is a very popular sport, along with two youth baseball fields that can also be converted into full soccer fields inside the sports dome. This will be the largest sports dome in the world due to the size of it, and it will help set our sports facility apart from any other comparable facility. Mr. Yancy will talk more about how this facility will compare with other facilities in the region and across the country. I would want to remind you that the developer does have a signed project labor agreement with local labor unions for the construction of the facility. Also, all of the other property taxing entities for the property have agreed to abate their property taxes in the same way that the city did, and that is also showing that there's tremendous support out there for this development. The development assistance and the structure of the incentives are not changing with any of these amendments. The amount of money that's shared for hotel motel tax, sales tax, and property tax rebates remain the same in the structure of that. It also, I would like to remind you and others that the risk for success and the risk for running a successful sports complex lies with the private development group, not with the city or their taxpayers, because these financial incentives that are giving back to the development team to help fund this project are generated from additional tax revenues. And so, you know, what you would typically see in other local governments is someone like a city or a park district would borrow all the money to build such a facility, hire an operator, and then hope that that facility is successful enough to service the debt and other types of things. The arrangement here in Springfield is much different, but I believe much better for our taxpayers, because it does not put the taxpayers at risk for the operational wins or losses of the sports facility. Frankly, the developer has to perform, the operator has to perform to create those revenues that exist to help fund that. One thing that has changed with the acceleration of this construction into one phase as opposed to two phases, the construction costs get accelerated into their front side, but they're still much less than what it would have been total for two different phases of construction. In the current development agreement, the city's contribution towards construction costs is capped at 30.5 million. Under the amended development agreement, they would move up to 33.5 million. Also, you may remember that the city in the current agreement has agreed to help fund operational improvements, ongoing costs, capital improvements at the sports complex to keep it modern and relevant. That cost sharing is, every dollar the developer spends, if the tax revenues exist, a dollar will be shared back with the developer for that also, so it's a 50/50 sharing of those costs. So if it's not creating the tax revenues, you don't share, and if the developer doesn't spend the money on the maintenance, then you don't share also, but that will help keep the facility relevant and modern and continue to attract entities in there for tournaments. Currently, the first phase of that was going to be a $250,000 a year sharing with the indoor and outdoor coming together at the same time, the amended agreement would move up to $500,000. So in the development assistance cap altogether, therefore, is increased from 36.26 million in your current agreement to 45 million in what would be the amended agreement. Agreement runs for 23 years, like it did before. The sports complex has to begin construction with 90 days and open to the public no later than December 31, 2025. But assuming, or with the agreement of the city, the developer would break ground on this facility this summer and begin construction. So in summary, I was hoping to be able to explain to you how the development is different, the agreement is different, what the amendments are. I believe you've invited with full redlined versions also, and the summary document also that you'll have, and we will be happy to go through these things again at the council meeting next week. We're also happy to answer any questions after we finish our presentation tonight and between now and next week. So at this time, I would like to have Dirk McCormick come up. Dirk has provided a really nice virtual walkthrough of the facility, allow him to explain that, and then Mr. Yancy will come up and talk about how this facility, will compare it to other facilities that they operate.
Thank you. The first video I'd like to call your attention to is a flyover of the sports park. This is what we are hoping to build. This is what we want to build. This is what we're planning to build.
You needed some music.
I know.
It's kind of quiet.
The next one will have music.
Can you just orient me real quickly? Are we looking, what direction are we looking right now?
Right now, you are looking south.
South, okay.
The next video is of the dome that Asadi, which is our dome builder, our dome designer, will be constructing for us. This is one they just opened out in Colorado. Right now, it's the world's largest sports dome. Ours will be slightly bigger so that we can be certain to house two softball diamonds inside. They they can't do that with theirs.
How big is it? I can't hear it.
Best.
He bringing us mountains too, or?
Did we turn my TV off so I could hear?
I can't hear.
I can't hear this.
I'm going to ask Todd Yancey to come up and talk about how.
I'll remember that question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll wait till my turn. I just need to, I couldn't hear anything you were saying because of that thing, so go ahead.
They didn't say anything. Chuck, you didn't miss anything. They weren't saying anything.
He was talking about the size of the dome, Joe, and that's what I was trying to figure out. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you for having me this evening. My name is Todd Yancey. I'm with Sports Facilities Companies. We are the leader in amateur facility management and operations throughout the country. Currently, we we operate somewhere around forty two facilities across the country. Our, our company is a one stop shop, obviously, starting with feasibility through development into management. I work on the management side of the company, so once we get into the actual operations of the park, I have been working closely with Dirk and the team on the design and operations of it because it is important for us at the beginning standpoint to engage with our network partners, to look at what the market needs, what our partners would look for when they want to come to a location like this and a park like this, so that we incorporate that into plans to make sure that we have the park that is going to draw the national partners that we want to this area. So we've been doing that along the lines, and that's one of the things that really is drawn out with the Shields Park is the fact that we have incorporated versatility at the park that allows us to not only target the bigger diamond fields at four hundred foot diamonds that a lot of other parks don't have, we've made it where we can down play down to the twelve U players, which is obviously the largest population. Having the dome itself allows us to operate year round and run tournaments during the off seasons in December when we all know here in the Midwest, it gets rather cold and people still want to play baseball and softball. So it's great to have that dome and be able to go inside. So really, that is, that is going to be one of the key driving features is the versatility and how having those national partners there to support and speak into it at the beginning was important to us. The other aspect of it, what draws it apart is the community itself in this park. We can't put that aside in how important Springfield is as the community will play into the draw, not only for the part where we have support from the community, other people want to utilize the park in the community. We've worked with local organizations that want to do that as well, as well as the fact that when people come to Springfield, they want to get out and see different things that Springfield has to offer. And that's going to be an important part of the marketing tools that we put out there when we're marketing this across the nation. So those are really the three key factors is working with our national network and our partners and how we developed it, how we're bringing them to the market, how we have the versatility of the park and make it the premier, one of the premier parks in the country, the ability to operate year round, and then the community itself. Those are the three big factors that I wanted to point out this evening, and I appreciate your time and having me this evening.
Don't go nowhere. We got a long list.
Ah, I figured.
We'll start with Alderman Donnelly.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair and gentlemen. Thank you for being here this evening and thank you for your interest in Springfield. This is a project that has been long forthcoming, back when Mayor Daven worked with Shields, Shields on coming to Springfield, and this was a key part of it. I remember when Albert Pujols with the St. Louis Cardinals, I might add, was in Springfield and had an interest at one time. We've battled through a recession, ups and downs in the economy, financing issues and so forth out at this site. And quite frankly, I'm tired of my brother, friends, constituents, all asking me when their children are in other cities in Illinois, other cities in the Midwest, why can't Springfield get its act together? And this is something that I hope comes to fruition here that will be a, no pun intended, game changing development. It would complement not only existing restaurants, but and hotels and Shields and other retail establishments throughout the community, but will indeed draw more attention, draw more people and more economic activity, which is what we need here. I have, I have a lot of things to absorb with the amendments that I'm not going to get into here tonight, as Mr. McCready alluded to, that we were just provided that information here late afternoon today. But I appreciate, again, your interest. I do have one question, and maybe it might be more towards Corporation Council, but I'll ask it to Mr. McCready because he alluded to it when he spoke, is I'm a big advocate and always concerned about the city being protected. I know other taxing districts are involved in incentives and, and I hate to be, and I'm not, I guess, but I will ask this question. If the project gets underway and does not come to fruition or gets half built, a quarter built, what have you, will the city be at risk for any, in any way, shape or form with funds?
Corporation Council can best advise you on the risk, but I believe the way this is structured is the facility needs to be up and operating and open and generating tax revenue for you to have to share anything back. Is that a fair?
Correct. It's on a really almost, if you may remember when it was talked about a little bit that it's all on a reimbursement basis. Now, the, it is my understanding of, we have not seen all of the financing materials. They do have within ninety days, although it's my understanding it's pretty much done with the financing side. There's a revenue bond component. However, the bank would be purchasing the bond, therefore providing the funds that would be for the construction then with later tax dollars to pay those bonds. If the tax dollars do not materialize, then in that event, if the risk is with the bank and with the developer.
Right. That is music to, I'm sure, all of our ears. Thank you, Corporation Council.
We tried to be, you know, I'm a taxpayer here too, right? And as badly as we want a sports park, we want to do it in a way that can achieve protection for the taxpayers also. I have to say that one of the things that's made this so tough is the structure is very unique. But I believe, you know, sometimes in life, you can get something fast or you can get something good. And what I, what I believe is by going through the process that everybody had to go through, we've come up with something that is really good and provides a facility that can actually do more than what we anticipated.
Thank you for those comments. Is it safe to say that the amendment that were, that was, is being presented and the reason why we're discussing this eve, this evening, what it does is it moves up the timing of the project, so it's all done more or less at once, and also increases the eligible project cost accordingly.
Exactly what it does. We, so they've, development team has accelerated the construction, so there's more money being spent faster than what was anticipated as opposed to coming back to the city for a second phase, which is what the first, what the original agreement anticipated. All that's coming together at once.
I will, this is my final question. If, if the, if the cost, because you're doing it all at once, caused the overall project cost to decrease, why are you asking for more funds? I guess that's a more of a developer question.
Sure. The original cost, you had phase one and phase two, and that cost was this much.
Right.
Under an arrangement where you're doing all in one phase, it's more than doing it in one phase, but less than what it would be in doing it two phases. The original agreement you had only funded the first phase, and then the development team was challenged to deliver on that and then come back to the city for a second phase.
That's the, that's the key answer there is you're going to have to come back not to ask for phase two, and the money would have been more.
Right.
So thank you, Mr. McCready, and thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Could I say to Alderman Redpath, the dome is two hundred and seventy feet by seven hundred and fifteen feet.
That's a, the hundred and fifty thousand foot structure. I picked up.
Yep.
I couldn't hear you, sorry.
Was that your only question, Alderman Redpath?
No, I had, so I just wanted to also echo Alderman Donnelly's comments because obviously this has been a really widely anticipated and welcomed project for the city of Springfield. Everybody in town, everybody in central Illinois is talking about it, so we hope for it to be a success. And, you know, I'm glad they're bringing it all together. Now, so what, so what was the timeline for when construction will start again, if you could re-explain that?
The development team expects to start construction this summer. They would want to close on, I think, believe the agreement requires construction to begin within ninety days of whenever the agreement is passed and signed, is that correct, Dirk? Yes. So they would have to start that within ninety days, but they want to start sooner than that because we have two seasons in Illinois, winter and construction.
So do you have a proposed time when that, that is going to, that's going to take place that, when we sign on that?
If the council agrees to accept this agreement at their meeting next week, it would be signed before the end of April. Is that fair? And could begin construction May-June timeframe? I don't want to.
No, that's, that's right.
Okay.
Ideally, from masquerading, we would like to hit.
So people at home can hear you.
Sure. Ideally, from masquerading, perfect window is May fifteenth to June fifteenth. We want to hit that window, and that's why we're here today.
Are you going to continue construction throughout the winter?
Part of it will be, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I think this is, could, could be a win for, for Springfield in some sorts, but I, I know when we first brought this to the table many, many, some years ago, my worries as well as my colleagues, one of my colleagues, was, was how it, this, this project was not beneficial to all of our city. And, you know, we have some existing assets that we worry about in our city, you know, the Chamberlain Ballpark as well as Robert Roberts Stadium. And we really wanted to see this investment that the city was making happen benefit all of our citizens. And so, you know, and I know that, that you said you have talked to some local organizations and things of that nature. Do, could you educate me on some of those organizations?
I made a mistake in my initial presentation, forgot to mention that one of the things that Mayor Lingfelter had asked to add in was the ability for pricing, securing pricing and expertise on this project to help with turfing Chamberlain and Robert Roberts Stadium. Is that correct, Mayor?
Correct.
Yeah. That was something that, and I apologize for leaving that out of my presentation. I know that was an important, important to you. So part of that agreement is being able to work with the turf installers who work on this project to try to secure the best pricing possible to be able, to be able to do that. Also, the, there will be a not-for-profit set up to help develop funding for individuals that maybe cannot, that don't have the financial means to be able to participate at the facility. And the agreement with District one eighty six was really important to allow all the students across the public school district to be able to access the facility. And that's going to be a big help because, you know, instead of the school district having to build some of their facilities, they're going through an enormous capital program right now, this will allow the students to be guaranteed time at the sports complex to, to be able to participate in events at a state-of-the-art facility. Hopefully, I answered your question, I'm sure.
It, it does. It gives me some, some insight. I, I think, you know, some other things that, that we need to think about is that there's, there's a lot of, lot of coaches, so to speak, in various disciplines and of sports that that will also need, you know, some assistance. You know, it's hard to pay, you know, I was a coach for ten years. It's hard to pay fifty dollars, you know, twice a week if you want to be good and three times if you want to be exceptional for, for, for certain sports teams. And, and so what you run into is, is that those very same kids, you know, are not, are not afforded the opportunity to play in the nice shiny object in Springfield where still, you know, got to sit and look at it and stuff. And those are the things that, that bother me about the project, not that it can't happen. You know, I've hosted tournaments and brought teams here, and so I, I get it. I get the potential that this project will be, but it, but, but it will be a loss for our community because they'll never get to enjoy it, you know? And, and I worry about that. And, you know, so I, I want to review it a lot closer and, and hopefully, you know, it'll work out for everyone.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate those concerns, and it makes sense. And I do feel like the development team is trying hard to do those things. At this point, all they can say is they're going to do them, and their actions will speak louder than their words going forward, but I'm confident they'll be able to deliver on that. I too coached, you know, youth baseball for seventeen years. You may wonder about my mental capacity right now that I told you that, but all of my coaching was in recreational park district leagues, mostly in Decatur. And my kids lived in the city of Decatur, and the kids that I coached lived in the city of Decatur. So I understand personally how important it was to be able to help those kids access sports and what it did, what it did for their lives. I mean, it's not always about being the best ball player. You were raising adults, that's the goal, and teaching them how to, how to cooperate on a team, how to work in a team and how to work with people you might not like, which happens sometimes. So, yeah, I, and the Growth Alliance will help you hold their feet to the fire on that. Okay?
All right. I appreciate you. My final, my final question is, is any of the other taxing bodies who have signed on to this be, be asked for, for additional funding?
Well, their funding will go up as they build this entire project because it's an abating of the property taxes. Okay?
Thank you.
Now, I, I did want to clarify, the abating of the property taxes is only on the complex, not any of the land surrounding it. And so any development that happens there, they will see a tremendous boost from that too. Yep?
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. And Ryan, thank you for bringing this forward. I've been, I've been getting asked by a lot of people, there's a lot of, I guess, people that are spec, very, that they're not sure whether this is going to go, especially it's been a long time, it seems like, since we initially passed what we did. And all, you know, a lot of people, because the city's been burned on some things before and, and, you know, and I keep saying, we're, we'll be getting something. So I think it's imperative that you guys get on construction. You've hit all the taxing bodies, you've, you've done, you know, and I, and that's great, but it, this thing needs to start rolling. I think that we, one of the problems we've had is we waited too long. Every year, you know, is a season, and it, and it's going to take a while to get, get things moving. Now, on the positive side, I do know down at Lake of the Ozarks, they have a sports complex, and in two years, it's already exceeded its capacity. They're, they're doubling the number of, of fields because it's just gone, gone bigger than what they thought. And hopefully, you know, Scott Dahl can work his magic and get as many people in here as possible, and, and we can have the same thing happen here. And, but I got to tell you, we can't have, if ninety days comes and goes, I'm, there's going to be some, some, you're going to be back in here because to me, we, we waited long enough, and, and the people in the city are going to give up on it. I will tell you, my, my, I've talked to a lot of people that are very leery about it. And I know you're working with SASSA and that, and I've had people from SASSA even questioning it. And, you know, these are things that we just, we got to get moving and, you know, so.
Absolutely. The clock is ticking, and the, the abatements have deadlines on them also for them to start. So if they can't get started soon, it will be very difficult for the complex to move forward. So we're, we're at a, a point of maximum momentum right now on this, and, and the right time of year, things have come together, this is the time, this is our chance to do it. And I get, I'm never on the radio where I don't get asked about this project every single time.
Me either.
Yeah, I think probably everybody up here gets, gets asked. And it's, I know it's not a great answer, but it's the most, one of the most complicated things I've worked on because of the way the structure and the financing is set up. And also, you know, there's, there was a process of all that land was, you know, designed to be outlet malls, and so the planning, the, you know, the, the site planning had to be redone. That took some time to get done. You want to do that in responsible ways, you don't create traffic problems. There were, I mean, there were, there were just things, and, and the development team was not wanting to delay either because inflation and their costs are on at the same time. So we are, everybody involved's ready to break ground. And, and so, yeah, we, we appreciate your patience and process.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. Alderman Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Ralph answered one of my questions, why so long? You know, Legacy Point was agenda matter on my first city council meeting, and now I've had reelection, you know, to get on for a new term and in the beginning of a third year, and I'll just leave it at that. I'm going to accept your answer, in ninety days, there's going to be some smoke. My second question, I've always been concerned with this project concerning our school district and how our school district benefits, and I always get answered, well, they're going to get to play there. I see this magnificent, magnificent construction and gym going up at Land Fair and all these other pieces of, of sports complexes that the school district is doing, but I'm addressing taxes or sales tax or any kind of way through money that our school districts, and that makes me have to ask, where is the location of the dome? Where is it going to be located? On the side that benefits Springfield or the side that benefits Chatham?
On the north side, right? Virtually the entire park. Virtually the entire park is in the District one eighty six boundaries.
Okay.
That was part of, that was part of the discussion with the school board.
And I'm glad to hear that because that was, I asked that back then, and I got that answer, and today it hasn't changed. So I appreciate you. That's all I have.
That's a very valid concern. I'm glad you asked that. I forgot to mention it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Williams. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you all for coming. I appreciate that some of my questions have already been answered, but I'm going to kind of go through. Also, thank you very much for the redlined version of the agreement. That is hugely helpful. So my, but my first question is, relates to the, the indoor facility and the, the durability of a structure of that type. I, I've seen, I've, I've seen them in other locations. I know Wisconsin Marquette has one on their campus, so I know it got through Wisconsin winters, but what's the life expectancy for building of that type?
The warranty on that dome is twenty years. Life expectancy is twenty five to thirty years. And so, I mean, the designer of, of the dome is Asadi out of New York. I believe they've been around since nineteen sixty four. They're located in upstate New York. They built these things all over the world, so I'm pretty confident that they know how to build it to, to survive in Illinois weather.
Sure. So, so when you say twenty five years, I mean, that's two years longer than this agreement.
Yes.
Are they repairable or, or is that, is that twenty five and done? You have to now replace the whole?
Yeah, you're going to have to replace the fabric. The, the dome itself will have to be replaced.
Okay. Okay. And, and is that replacement cost is not included as part of this agreement?
So the five hundred thousand dollars annually that you're seeing the ongoing costs includes a reserve for replacements.
Okay, so you will be building over the twenty five years.
Correct.
Of fund to be able to be placed.
That is correct.
That sounds like good planning.
It does.
I appreciate that. Okay, so now I'm going to just kind of go through this section by section with just some quick questions. When you talk about the indoor project, I noticed we're increasing the size, but decreasing basketball courts and volleyball courts. Is that because you're adding this full-size soccer field?
That is correct.
That takes up all of that extra space, and that's a, a soccer field that can be converted, and you said to two youth baseball fields.
Yes.
Wonderful. I appreciate you putting a soccer field in there.
And, and I will point out that we are setting aside eight acres for five years after we open for the potential field house, but for that we'll have to come back.
So you skipped to the end of my questions, so, but thank you. And I think that's something you also need to probably promote a little bit, just that there's, there's an additional planning for more, more space here, and I really, I appreciate that a lot. So my next question is the effective date of this agreement. What will that be?
Effective date of this agreement is when we secure financing primarily. There's a few other things in it, is primarily securing the construction finance for the entire project.
So it's the amended agreement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Um okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. So we're not the clock does not reset to two and a half years ago or whenever with the first the first development agreement was signed, right?
I'm sorry.
We're re- actually, we are. We're resetting the clock to this date.
Yes.
Okay, for the amendments. Okay, and I yeah, I had highlighted the fact that that you've got the other projects listed and I appreciate that very much. Um. Brian, thank you for and 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 Corporation Council for going over the bond um issue. I I do want to point out to Council, we're changing this from a May language, which gives us discretion, to will. So the city is now committing to issuing these bonds. It's not a question of if, it's it's just when.
That's right. And the the bond will be purchased by
By the bank.
By the bank, right.
Okay.
Yep.
Which
Which is why just I apologize, but that's why the contingency about providing the financing formal commitment, because we don't have that yet. So it's still subject to getting that information and making certain that it, you know, that it all fits together.
Yep.
In other words, the issuance of the bonds, yes, it is uh required to issue them, but it is provided that the financing package that is provided is acceptable.
Comes first.
Yes.
And then and then again, this will come back before us for to the Council for approval for the bond terms.
For the bonds.
Yeah.
The bonds, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, they can't issue bonds without coming back before you.
Okay, I think.
That's definitely not me.
Um and that was that was my last. If you could just maybe just give us a little bit of information, because I that was my last thing I scanned through quickly, on the future field house concept that you've included in this?
I hope it's a track.
Honestly, we have not designed that field house today. And I think if we had, it might be adjusted based upon what we are building now and what we might need in the future. So I'm not sure if I can offer much beyond.
But just you're you're setting aside five or eight acres?
Yes.
Why am I trying to read this without these? Um and you're gonna that would be part of within the first five years, but that would be done again with these funds, so that that would be rolled into this this agreement?
So what would have to happen is we would have to come back, meet with
The agreement for just very quickly to help on this, um because of the way of the staging of the work, uh the issue with the field house, the agreement provides they must come back to the Council. No funds may be used for that without the city approving the design and use. So that aspect, that final piece of you all has to come back.
And that would be within five years?
Five years of opening of the sports park.
Of the opening. Okay, wonderful. I'm I'm really excited. I've I've driven all over um the Midwest and then some to youth tournaments and youth activities. And um I I appreciate you, the way you're working with our school district to to bring inclusion and 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 provide more access. I I think we certainly need to make sure that we're we're working with SMTDs to make sure the buses are getting out there, too. And um but this is this is just a really great project to anchor the South of the town. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Because I know this has not been easy.
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Redpath.
Just to follow up uh from Alderman Conley's comments, well, is this structure being uh this is tornado tornado land down here in Illinois? So it will be both.
I understand that and so does the designer. And I could probably get you the the wind speed survivability for it for free of
And obviously, it's insured and stuff in case
Absolutely.
mother tornado comes running through here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and they'll they'll have to meet current building codes um and you know, of the city, which uh addresses those kind of things, too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. Alderman McMenamin.
Thank you uh for being here tonight and giving us this additional information. Just a it's just a math issue. Uh you mentioned the air structure's two seventy feet by seven fifteen feet. And so
That's like a hundred and ninety-three thousand square feet.
Right. So is that flat space or the shape of the dome space, uh square footage?
Right. So the since it is a dome, you get close enough to the sidewalls, there'd be a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of competition space, right? That the space of the dome?
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
Yeah, the dome's gonna be a little bit bigger than 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 that actual field space.
And when we talk about this being possibly the largest dome in the world, are we talking about the flat space or the dome space?
That it'd be the biggest sports dome in the world. And I don't know um
Okay, we can move on. I just was curious about that.
I don't know how to to I guess we I would challenge someone to show me the, you know, build one a little bit bigger. Someone can go fit a larger or longer or something and, you know, steal your title.
Hey, all right. Um I understand. So and let's go back to the subsidy part of this. Um the the city subsidy is moving from thirty million to thirty-three point five million as far as the the maximum. Uh that's the cap on the subsidy. And could you describe the sources of those subsidies again in broad terms?
Sure. Yeah, there's a hotel motel tax incentive. So the city increased the hotel motel tax from seven to eight percent throughout the city to provide these incentives. Two percent of that of now eight percent hotel motel tax is being allocated to provide development assistance for the sports complex. And that was done with the support and endorsement of the Springfield Hotel Lodging Association. Sales tax rebate is seventy-one point four percent of the city's portions of sales tax received on sales within the sports development area. So that's not just the sports complex, that's the area above a base of one million four hundred eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars of sales tax revenue. So the base is what was negotiated between the city and the developer to say, this is the base amount of sales tax coming in right now to make sure the sports complex did not capture any of the base sales tax. So the additional sales tax revenue that comes after the sports from the sports complex being operated. And then a property tax rebate, the city will rebate to the developer its portion of the property tax collected on the sports complex as well all the other taxing districts that have already approved that abatement.
So trying to s- understand it a different way, the thirty-three point five million dollar cap on the subsidy, how much of that thirty-three point five million do you think comes from sales tax, from motel motel uh sales tax?
I hate giving an answer like this, but it depends. I mean, if if people fill up the hotels and they don't spend as much money at the development and they spend more money on Dirksen Parkway and Veterans Parkway, I mean, it's it's going to depend on how the money gets spent. I think it's difficult to estimate right now. Um what the hope is that, I mean, you know, none of the ten-year-old kids that come to a sports event drive themselves here. That's a big advantage of ours. Um and they bring a family with them and they will stay in the city. They'll stay all around the city and that will generate the hotel motel tax.
Okay, let's focus on the hotel motel tax for right now. So that hotel motel tax gets collected currently. And when does that hotel motel tax get distributed to the project for for cost?
They have to be open and operating. Is that correct, Mr. Zirkle? Yes. So they would have to be they would have the developer has to invest all their money, construct the facility, and have that up and running.
Okay.
So they have to make their they have to take their risk first.
Okay. And you mentioned that the besides the thirty-three point five million cap um for total subsidy, there's gonna be a annual cost sharing. Um and that was two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, and now it's gonna be half a million dollars a year. What's the source of that money with it?
So all of the uh tax incentives that I mentioned create a pool of money that can go to fund these things. So the specific operations and maintenance isn't tied to any one single part of that incentive. The incentive creates a fund of dollars that then can be shared back to the developer based on the agreement. So it's not like the hotel motel tax hotel motel tax pays for operations and maintenance and the sales tax pays for this thing. It creates it creates a pool of fund. It's a stack of incentives, which most projects I work with have some type of stack of incentives that create a pool of of dollars that can go to incentivize a developer.
So when does the half million dollars uh cost share kick in for the city? When does the city start making that half million dollars?
The developer would have to spend a half a million dollars first on maintenance and other types of activities. Um it says could be up to that much annually. And so as they start setting up apart their capital reserves and investing money in the maintenance of the facility, I mean, it could start sometime in that first year of full operation. Would be my anticipation, right? Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead. The agreement basically indicates that you start accruing that money uh when the rent becomes effective, but we cannot tap it until we are open and operating.
Okay, so then that tap is in addition to the cap of the thirty-three point five million, is that correct?
Correct. Yes.
So when uh just to finish the the train of thought here, we're talking about maintenance might begin, let's say, two years after or the very year of construction. And then a half million dollars per year times twenty years, we're seeing another ten million dollars of subsidy is the way I'm calculating it potentially.
If the developer spends ten million dollars, too. Remember, it's a dollar-for-dollar match.
Yeah.
So the I mean, the original total development assistance cap in your current agreement is thirty-six point two six million. And then the new one to this amended agreement would be forty-five million.
But we've also learned tonight that the uh the dome has a replacement cost and that the uh developer wants to start building up a reserve for that replacement cost of the dome. And that the developer will want to put aside its money and then for that purpose. And then by putting aside its money, let's say up to a half million dollars a year, then the the city becomes obligated to put in a half million dollars. So I think it that's a prudent thing to do to to create reserves. But I'm trying to look at this from the city's point of view of the total cost of this project. So I think we're gonna be at at least forty-three million dollars of subsidy, the way I look at this.
Well, you're yeah, you'd be capped at forty-five.
Capped at forty-five.
Yeah, under the amended agreement. Right now, you're capped at thirty-six point two six.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for your questions.
Uh that's not it. Thank you, Alderman.
I know. I know.
Alderman Gregory.
Just a quick follow-up question. Um um local management company will be running this or have we?
Sports facilities company will be the uh will be operating the facility. You can do
Are you gonna hire somebody that lives in Springfield?
Correct. We will hire somebody that will live in Springfield. I'll be the person overseeing that uh manager, the general manager of the facility. Um I live about five hours away, but have lived in Illinois for twenty-six years, so um not too far away. Um but we will hire, we will do a national search for a general manager. Uh generally, we will um just because that's a certain skill set that we'll look for. The marketing manager for sure will be somebody that we look for, uh someone here in Springfield. Um but they will the entire leadership team will be based in Springfield.
Okay. I just wanted to ask that. I think uh um you know, that's important as well as you know, the workforce is important, being local. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory, and Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I Alderman um McMenamin actually brought up a good point about the the maintenance. Um I'm I don't know that I I I don't know that I'm in favor of if if you throw half a million dollars in, even though you don't use it, just throw it in a pot. I don't know if that's that's the way we should operate. Um to me, what you spend on maintenance for the facility is what we match, not throwing it in a savings account. I don't know that that's 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 not the way I understood it originally.
They accrue in their own account, right?
They accrue their own.
And you would come out to explain that, yeah. So you're you're not gonna be th- Dirk?
You're accruing it in your own account. We're not we're not getting that money put in our account at that point in time.
Right.
We have to spend the money to get be able to access that money.
Right, Dirk. But the but my point is, is okay, one year you only spend, let's say, fifty grand
Yep.
or a hundred grand, all right? And then so we give you a hundred grand. But then two years or the next year, let's say for some reason you have to spend, you know, six hundred grand. We pay you up to five hundred grand, right?
So if
It says five hundred a year.
Pay three hundred.
Right. Okay, so and so first year, we spend two hundred. We spend two hundred, we get one hundred from you.
Okay.
Okay. The next year, if we spend six hundred, we get three hundred from you.
Right.
So if we spend eight hundred thousand dollars, we'll get four hundred.
My point is if you go way over, we're not paying over five hun- five
You you are you are never paying more than five hundred
Yeah, let's count.
A year.
You're you're never putting more than five hundred thousand dollars a year into it, but it is accruing. And and it is very similar to the thirty-three and a half million versus the sixty-seven million. You're never paying more than fifty percent, right? And and that's basically the same way we're looking at on on the ongoing costs as well.
They would have to spend a they would have to spend a million dollars to maximize your contribution on that.
I've gotta think about this, but I
I understand.
I'll probably call you this week to talk to you about it.
No, it's and I yeah, that I'm glad we get to talk about it again. So yeah, they you they have to spend the money to tap in to the money.
Right.
So I mean, as far as it goes, first of all, they have to be successful and generate tax revenue to even potentially access it.
Right.
Then they actually have to spend a dollar to get fifty cents back. So it's not a a payment in lieu of anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. Now we're gonna circle back around to the motion. So it's a motion for debate?
Yes.
And we got a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
All right.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Ryan. Is there any unfinished business?
Madam Chair, oops.
The button. Alderman Gregory?
Real quickly, I just wanted to um circle back to our um SHA TIF adjustments that um that was gonna mimic the Far East, Mr. Zirkle. Um do do we have a ordinance coming for that? If you if you
Next round.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then my I have just one bit of unfinished. I'll skip that. Um anybody else got unfinished business? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I've got one.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, I I assume this is unfinished. Um I just want to congratulate the YMCA. Um they opened up their new soccer fields. Uh this past weekend was the first uh um the first uh weekend. And uh everything went pretty smooth, I think. Um you know, the they had nice uh they had police out there, you know, directing traffic and and uh my understanding is the mayor's granddaughter got to play her first soccer game out there on her birthday. So uh how many goals did she
Play a little bit.
How many goals did she score, Mayor? Was she?
Not enough.
My daughter played.
So congratulations to them. It's it's a um they were they were spending a lot of money renting fields out at UIS and and now they don't have to. And as far as I know, you know, they'll they may have to make tweaks, but it it looked very well from from my house, which is two two doors down from basically the field. So congratulations.
Thank you, Alderman Hanauer. Do we need to circle back around to you, Alderman Gregory?
Uh I got some new business.
Oh, okay. Any new business? Alderman Gregory?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to make a general general and and you know, um Corporation Council, you can give me some information. But I I think that we we have, you know, in the future, we have to think about um these large buildings. I got this this Walgreens over here on Sixth Street and, you know, it has been vacated. And guess what? I got Fly Dump City, trash is, you know, um piled up. And 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 I think that going forward, when these businesses come and build these buildings, I don't know if it was built there, probably built before me. But um when they leave, I think there has to be some type of housekeeping thing, like you're gonna have some type of maintenance, you're gonna you're gonna come visit the building, you know, so often or something to make sure that, you know, it's just not something we gotta keep sending public works to go clean up and or or whatnot, or or find them and things of that nature. I I don't know how we do it, but I think, you know, going forward, so we don't have the Pillsbury's, this this Walgreens, some of my constituents in 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 this newer area, you know, are very, very concerned about it. So I I think that um, you know, going forth in these bigger buildings, not every little small building, but in these bigger buildings, we we definitely need to think about that. Um and my final my my final new business, um Mr. Zirkle, I I have to ask and um our summer youth employment program, I would like to ask, you know, to see if we can have an ordinance drawn up. I know it won't probably take place until our new mayor and that's fine. The reason why I say that is I received a um some information from our Springfield Park District. Um and you know, to to continue this program, um I will have them come and present as well as partners that they work for. Um but they look to start that in June and it's April. And we wanna, you know, it's gonna take some time, but it's very, very important. And you know, once once the sports parks, you know, um get done, we invested so much money, maybe that can be where we partner to put our kids to um work in the summertime. So I just want to ask for those things. Um we must still conduct city business. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gregory. Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Chair, for purchase. I um first of all, I need to echo Alderman Hanauer's comments. I I coached out at the Y Fields for a very I, I coached out at the Y Fields for a very long time and it's, it's nice to see them in the new, the shiny new fields. It looks great. I think a lot of people are learning roundabouts in the city. This will help everyone. But my new business is actually, I'd like to just extend, Mayor, and I know we don't have anyone from Public Works here, but extend a, a thanks to the Public Works. Do we?
David.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking for Daryl and Nate. I apologize. But just extend a thanks. I know I had reached out to Nate after the, the storms a week ago, over a week ago and, and a lot of branches down on Ward Eight and, you know, a lot of just, a lot of extra mess around town and, and asked that we could have more crews out and he said they were out, they were picking up branches and, you know, and that's in addition to all the work they do on a regular basis. As Alderman Gregory pointed out, we've, we get fly dumping. I've, I've reported some recently in my ward and they've just, they've been very responsive. They work hard. I was talking to one of your, one of your employees and he said, you know, that's a job that doesn't always get the thanks that it probably should, but they, they really, they're, they're coming through and, and I appreciate all the work they're doing. And also to CWLP for all the work they had in getting our power back with some of those crazy storms we had. So just, just a shout out again to the, the people who make the city really run. Please pass that on.
Thank you Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donilon.
Thank you Madam Chair. Just a comment, nobody really needs to respond, but, you know, we've had a number of, a number of issues before us in the last few months that deal with, in particular, downtown office buildings that have had problems. I know we're all well aware of that. But I would encourage the departments and the administration, the future administration, to take a more proactive approach so that buildings don't get in a condition where we have holes in the roofs and, and I can go on and on and, and but it's something that we need to take a constant look at and be, I know we have a complaint-driven system, but sometimes it's not always easy to see the problems when we, especially when you live here and you get used to seeing buildings and, and not getting into the nitty-gritty, but it's something that I think we ought to continually take a look at. And, you know, you drive around, and why I bring this up is I, I, you know, driven, driven around in recent days and taking a look at some of the buildings downtown where we have plywood and, and what prompted that is I had, I had a constituent ask about a specific building, so I went and looked at it and, and have spoken to some of the city about it. But, you know, we need to make sure that we, we can do better is really what I'm trying to say, so thank you.
Thank you Alderman Donilon. Alderman McMenamin.
I just wanted to share some exciting news out at White Oaks Mall. The wing that was Burgner's will now become a Malibu, Malibu Jacks. And that's a, like an indoor theme park. Think of Happy Hollow except without the really tall amusement stuff. And so that's, you know, the mall is reinventing itself, White Oaks Mall, and I think this is a major step forward. Construction has begun inside what was the old Burgner's area there at White Oaks Mall. And Brad Carlson was in here earlier to, today. I know he's now aware of what's happening in, in this Ward Seven area. And I think we'll get some more information about it as time progresses.
Thank you Alderman McMenamin. Mayor Langfelder.
Yeah, just to piggyback on what Alderman Donilon was talking about, after the Horseman discussion, we did reach out to Heritage Foundation and then also DSI Downtown Springfield, Inc. to do an assessment of all the properties downtown to make sure they don't get into that state and be more proactive. But that, they felt that might be part of the downtown medical district plan, so they'll coordinate that effort to make sure we don't duplicate it, but that will be something that will come forward in the future, either through that planning process or that they'd come with the ordinance request because it will take resources, financial resources to do that assessment of those properties.
I will be bringing that forward pretty soon.
I've been in discussion with DSI and those entities that Mayor Langfelder talked about and, you know, sometimes these are the uncomfortable conversations that we have to have when something happens. That building had been sitting vacant for so long. I know we have a building, I think Mayor won Fifth and Monroe that you had to shut down and just trying to figure out where we at with, you know, even that. You had to move a state, a state agency out of it because of the, the repairs that needed to be made, but like where are we at on that? So I've, I've been thinking of some things to.
Okay.
Thanks for those efforts.
No problem.
I used to work in that building.
We have a major elevator system problem.
The, the Fifth and Monroe one was more than the elevators. The, it had, its second means of egress was fire escapes and they were coming off the building. So there was many, many issues with that building. And, you know, those, they were written up and given to the ownership. And I don't know what they've decided to do, but I understand that Amren contacted us and they were gonna remove the meters. So I think they've pulled away from that building, so.
And again, this is just one of those situations where the follow-up, follow-through, where are we at? You all are doing an amazing job on Lincoln Towers, but again, I have to constantly email and keep all of you all on the email chain to just ask, hey, can we get a status update of these things? So I'm just thinking of that.
Out at that place again today. No, nothing different, just a status update, but again, a complaint on trash. But you heard that all last week and, and so, yeah, it's just constant problems with properties and, and people not maintaining their property.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone signed up to speak, Mr. Clerk?
No one has signed up, ma'am.
Is there anyone who wishes to address the City Council?
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.